Okay.
Eric.
Martin, here.
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 Frank.
Here.
Okay, number two, approval of agenda.
Any changes?
Yes, under three B, we're removing, we're removing three B. Discussion of school resource officer. And we need to add, and it'll be on your pre-premiered agenda, but not on the old agenda. Uh, the city administrator, uh, we're adding one to the resolution twenty-one through five, DOT funding here for South Marshall Street reconstruction. That is an add.
Okay. And any other changes? I'm looking for approval.
Call mode.
Second.
Call mode.
Westfield, now?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Pipa?
Yes.
Nisham?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Okay. Okay, number three, presentation petitions and other communications. A public hearing for purposes of announcing progress in the northeast sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. Are there any comments? Any public comments?
Yep, and then I need to, uh, provide an update. Uh, this public hearing is being held to update residents on the city's northeast sanitary sewer collection system improvement, uh, improvement project. This project is funded in part by Community Development Block. The scope of work and goals of the project have not changed since the grant application was submitted to the state, uh, in the fall of two thousand eleven. Construction on contract one, sanitary sewer replacement, began in September of two thousand twelve. Contractor is Keller Excavating Incorporated, and this work is substantial complete. Construction on contract two, sanitary sewer lining, will be completed by Vizzi Sewer, and work is expected to begin in January or February of two thousand thirteen. The grant is scheduled to close out November thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. To date, seventy-two thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars in CDVG funds have been requested, and eighty-one thousand nine hundred and five forty-five cents in matching funds from the city have been expended.
So what happened? No comments? Public hearing is closed. Okay, number four, report to us standing committees. Police Administration Chair, you have any suggestions?
Do you need to have council staff?
Yes.
No.
Okay. Uh, public safety, transportation, see?
Uh, no, they don't really manage to move us there. And there's, but then the city, the legislature generally. Uh, not that I'm aware of, because that is, would be the day after Christmas. And I was going to say if there was nothing, we'll just dispense this on January. If that's what people can do. Okay. Or if that's, so then, yeah.
Utility Committee, Garrett.
I'll report.
Economic Development Committee, Steven.
I'll report.
Uh, Luke, the Industrial Park Road Project.
Yes, I wanted to give you an update that I went to, um, the county supervisors and talked to them about the Industrial Park Road Project and the mechanism of funding utilizing TIP. Uh, it was a very pleasant conversation with the supervisors, and they seemed very much on board with that. Uh, what I'm looking for is specific action, uh, from city council to move forward. What we will need to do is that that will mean that the city would then be extending some funds for, um, bonding council and also to start the amendment process. Andre and I have had some discussions, uh, that bonding, cost of bonding council could potentially be rolled into plan, but for the TIP amendment, we could use some of the funds available in our economic development. If you're comfortable with moving forward, I would be looking for a motion to effect.
Have you made a motion?
Second. Call mode.
Can you go over that one more time a little bit?
Yeah, previously what we had talked about is, uh, we had originally signed an agreement to do division one of the Industrial Park Road Project, about eighteen hundred feet. That was contingent upon us receiving federal funds. Federal government came back, HWA, and said, no, you can't use those funds, and that was the project that can only be used for the actual bridge structure. So, council asked me to research some alternatives. One of the ideas that came up actually even came from the county auditor, was a concept of utilizing the availability of TIP funds from the industrial park area, which means it would have very minimal impact on city finances to move the project forward. So what we would do is we would look at about a ten-year bond, and the payback, to make the bond payment, we would certify TIP funds from the industrial park, which means the property has to get paid, but then go to help out that bond. The impact is that ultimately there's some impact on the schools from their, uh, the amount of tax dollars that they could generate, and also the county. However, there is a formula that allows the schools to be somewhat backed through, uh, the state funding. And I went and I spoke with the county, even though there were some opinions that they did not need to provide consent. I wanted to be able to go to the county regardless and ask them how they weighed in on the subject. And, uh, there was verbal support at that meeting.
There was lots of people.
There was verbal support from the supervisors at that meeting.
Uh, refresh my memory, where's the start and the end point of that?
The starting point is approximately corporate limits. If you know your way like that, um...
It's probably what's, uh, Tampa.
It's not that far.
Not that far.
It's just west of, you know, where the warehouse of, uh...
Bolton?
Bolton's Warehouse. It's just west of there, like...
So, I mean, I feel that certainly.
Yeah, it's, it's not clear to that road that you're thinking. It's not that far to the west.
It's not very far from where we've already done it.
Exactly, right.
I mean, there can't be too much, you know, space in between where we've already done it, so where we want to start.
That's correct. So it goes from that point, continues east to about, what I'm gonna say is Stone's Throw, further than where the water tower's at. It's a total length of between eighteen hundred and two thousand feet.
And it will not go through the front of fairways?
Not all the way. It goes through, I think it's their second or third driveway, it goes just past their second or third driveway, if you're going from less.
The old warehouse driveway probably won't be covered with that.
I...
But, but I think I know where you're, all of it's gonna get done, but art portion only goes in there, and then the county picks it up from that point forward.
I'm sorry, let that happen.
So it's all gonna be done. Is that, I think that's kinda what you were thinking, is that right? Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's a good point. The entire project, even from the intersection of Industrial Park and Courts, all the way south down to Main, all of that would be included as well.
Could you also mention a minimal, uh, uh, impact on, uh, the city of Moon? How minimal is that?
Well, the impact on city of Moon is that, uh, what I talked about using economic development funds would be to go through the amendment process. We'd have to amend our urban renewal area department. And the, that, if you remember, we'd be telling you that's about an eight to ten thousand dollar expenditure to go through that process. That would come from the city. However, there is another potential TIP project that we may be doing in the future as well, so I would probably try to roll two of them together and hopefully bring the costs down. I mean, it's still gonna be that eight to ten thousand, but then there's still that benefit from within corporate limits that would justify the expenditure.
So there's no cost on the general?
The only cost would be our next phase of annexation, uh, is in two thousand and sixteen. And this is something that Andrea brought up. In two thousand and sixteen, when we do that, uh, next annexation, the taxes that they, that would have came to the city, then again, will be funneled through that TIP and cover that portion of the project. But, I mean, the way I rationalize myself is that now they're within corporate limits, so there's some justification of then using the city tax dollars to fund. And if that portion of road is adjacent to those properties.
Isn't that something that almost has to be done before we start annexing the program?
Um, I think that what you're talking about probably, and our public work director's brought this up a number of times, that the standard of road should be brought up before annexation occurs. And I think that when Darryl was here, he was very outspoken about, um, he thought that that was ethically appropriate, that that should be updated prior to that annexation taking place. As far as some legal bound, it says it has to be updated prior to, I don't know if that exists.
It just seems like, you know, and it's Christmas.
So the action that you've taken as council is to instruct me to go ahead and move forward, uh, next steps of getting that, that plan started.
Yeah, I, you know, I, that's, everything's sounding good, but I still have a problem with, with not being kept up through the years, and now we're in construction, we're playing, doing it.
You didn't really give us a figure of what?
Well, the, uh, some of the construction costs that we received before was about six hundred and fifty thousand. In talking with the county engineers, they've explained they believe that that cost will come down. I don't wanna throw out an estimate, um, but...
And that's what the city is gonna cost us, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
That's what it, right, but we would use those TIP funds to repay that bond. So when we say a cost of us, that's not necessarily accurate.
It's not like a run through. Kinda like, who would you grant us, and we pay for it, and then we get the money back, so it's not technically, maybe our money. We're doing the project, but we're using the county's money to pay.
You're capturing the county's TIP money paid for.
Yeah, and one reason, if I can explain, and one reason why it's probably, and it will be cheaper, is because now, because there are no federal funds involved in it, you do not have to meet the DOT standards. That doesn't mean that the road is gonna be an inferior road. It just means that it will meet the county standards, and the width, if, if it had to be DOT, it was gonna have to be a wider road and much more different things, and, and now it does not have to be. So, so I think, I think you're right that, you know, they didn't come up with the exact amount, they made it sound like it could be, uh, I don't know, I shouldn't be using the word substantial, but there, there definitely will be a difference, because it's like what in their order, or more?
I think each lane did actually...
What in their order, so that's quite a better requirement, that's what reduced the cost.
Yes.
That's right. But not, I don't want any, you know, it's gonna be an inferior standard.
It's not somewhere standard, it's just...
No, it's just not gonna be that.
It's specifically replacing the road with, uh, far better ones there.
Can you repeat that?
That's the, um, Andrea, tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe the number we came up, it would be a ten-year payback.
Do we have to have an agreement with the county on that thing? We're in agreement, or will you say for granted that they're gonna do it, or?
The last communication I had with our bonding council is that they were of the opinion that yes, we would likely at some level have to have some type of a resolution or something. They haven't, uh, provided me with their final legal opinion on that, but that was kinda their initial request.
I don't know. Okay, I have a motion, second. Call mode.
Malon?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Pipa?
Yes.
Nisham?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Westfield? Yes.
Okay, and five departments, your board's building official.
Wayne is handling item number two. Actually, I'm sorry, he's handling item number two. Um, I'll take care of item number one. This is part of the CDG grant, uh, award housing rehabilitation contract to economic construction for fifteen twenty-five Fifth Street. We would be looking for a motion to approve, uh, to move that forward. Can you make questions?
Yeah, how, how does, uh, just, just a quick, if you could give a quick explanation. How do people apply for that, and how, how does it determine who can, can do that? Can you, is that a short answer, or is this, I'd like, I'd like to know.
I'm not, I don't know that I'm gonna be able to give you a, a real good, accurate answer. I do know that, uh, this is handled through the building department. It's part of the CDG grant, uh, and part of the qualifications are lower and moderate income qualifications.
My last question, you're not gonna be involved with what we have before with the, the modeling of houses, and then all of a sudden the extras come back every time?
You're talking about the reference of NSP program? Uh, this is completely different topic than that one. And these you have approved, council's approved a number of these in the past, in fact, for the first project.
This is actually our second project. Uh, we originally did the first one in two thousand and four, completed it in two thousand and seven. Then this is our second round, um, which started in two thousand and eight, and we have a hundred thousand dollar, um, city match, um, that comes out of TIP for the lower and moderate incomes, um, that we're required to do on behalf of TIP. So it meets that requirement. The other thing about this project is we specify where, at, from the cities that these all have to be in, and that they have to inform with certain criteria of what has to be done.
Can this all go towards our TIP requirements? What? Thank you.
Motion approved?
Yes.
Motion approved?
Second.
Call mode.
Nick?
Yes.
Pipa?
Yes.
Nisham?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Westfield? Yes. Malon?
Okay, number two, site plan for Casey's general store, Wayne.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, you see in the council packet that the city did a C, a site plan for new Casey's, uh, convenience store on southeast Marshall and Southman, the northeast corner of the intersection. During the site plan review process, Casey made a couple adjustments, but they had to make, uh, a few variance requests, which are included in the packet, uh, being the driveway spacing from the intersection of southeast Marshall to the north there, and also driveway spacing to the north, with the top going to the north. The driveway spacings we follow are SUDAS, and they're based on roadway classification. And they're generally hard to do when you're in a redevelopment condition, such as what we're doing here. All these lots out here are pretty small, and it's gonna be hard in these conditions with any of the mods moving forward. Uh, there's still a little concern there with it, that's why we have in the site plan, you'll see access easements on the Casey's site plan. They've agreed that, um, to include those, and we're hoping in the future, if there is a problem, what we can do is reduce the number of access points and have a joint driveway, so it's probably over the north, and Casey's would use one driveway, if that becomes an issue. And you'll see, that's in my comments, um, in here, and it's also shown on their site plan process. P and Z reviewed, uh, the site plan, reviewed our comments, they did approve the site plan with the additional comments involved in it, are included with it. I was contacted by the owner of Boom Rental in North, and he was opposed to granting the variance, said wanna make you aware of that. He was just concerned that additional traffic and more driveways may cause an impact, got just this feeling, didn't have any researching on that, he was just concerned probably. I'll pass that along, but, uh, P and Z did make, uh, regulation, or did approve it, and that is here, recommending approval tonight.
Again, a question from Holden tonight, he's gotta be ready for it. Um, I, I saw, I know I did read it, Wayne, and I think you explained it pretty well, and I know you said it was a responsibility of Casey's if, in fact, the driveways changed or there was a joint. But my question is, when we approved Walmart, uh, part of stipulation was if there was gonna be, uh, because of traffic flows and whatever, we had an amount that was put in an escrow account for traffic, for possible future traffic, uh, issues. Is that something that, that should be looked into for this particular business due because of the traffic that could be created, or is, is that not the situation?
We, we talked about that, uh, as staff, it, it came up, and certainly we could do something for a whole area and just establish kind of a blanket assessment. What was difficult for us is trying to understand what kind of expenditures we're gonna be looking at down the road and assigning value to each one, and how much they should dedicate or how much they should put in. I believe the amount that came from Walmart, seventy, seventy-five thousand, yes.
The only, the only, my only concern, and I know it was brought up that night when we were talking about Walmart, but, well, maybe we can go back and assess the people that are there, but people that are there aren't the ones that's causing the problem. It's, it's the new larger businesses that are coming in, so I don't, I don't know that it's fair to go back to existing businesses and, and assess them because somebody else is coming in to set up a shop. I, I, I'm just asking a question, I don't know, maybe, you know, it's never been done ever before, it should be, I guess, but I, I think it's something that should be dropped forward possibly, because if there's gonna be an issue, I'm afraid now, the room.
If you do, I, there's no doubt, I mean, as we continue to have our meetings with those, uh, people on the highway third corridor, absolutely, we realize there's going to be issues. If council, as part of this approval, um, you institute some type of a requirement where they would have to, again, be a part of dedicating funds, you could certainly do that.
One, one thing that we were discussing that came up is, in the words of potential strip mall or something going in the north, that we're going, was, well, at what point do we say they are large traffic generator, or they aren't, or these people are creating type of, they use a road, you aren't, kind of, running into the problem of who's turning in the traffic and where they're gonna go, and how you, you know, identify a cost for that, or find a cost. It kinda came out of this special, Walmart is, the big box retailers are a different type of retailer than anything else, really. Is how, is what we end up, kind of, with the finale of our conversation, and how we decided that's just move forward with the access base in the environment.
Is, and I think another thing that came up, even, uh, the discussion about DMAC, realizing that, you know, some of the safety concerns, ultimately, the, the last major accident that occurred there was a DMAC student, you know, so somebody traveled from that area. So even looking at, you know, a location like that and saying, well, you're generating a more traffic, your enrollment is up, you're going to them even, trying to do some type of assessment, it is difficult just to know how far do you go before you assign some type of requirement to be financially involved. We do know that improvements in this area, whether it's, you know, we've talked about different ideas, whether signalization is gonna be a part of it, all of those are, they're gonna be substantial costs.
All it is, and some of it is, I mean, I don't like the fact that it costs us either, but some of it is harder than business to try and, trying to promote that, how we develop. But I know, I mean, I agree that some you gotta look for, but, I don't know, two to a dollar. I mean, some of them are being run into, somebody goes, well, you know what, this is turning up too much of a hassle, but, I don't, I don't know about that. The only reason that I think, and I, yeah, I know, I understand what you're saying, especially when you, you talk about the development up north, I never gave that a thought. What makes me think more about it is the proximity that it is to be entering Highway Third. That's, that's where my concern is at, um, being right there, I mean, I, there's, so, I, I just said, I think something that could be done, and it's gonna come to cost, and yes, you're right, as a city, we have to do some of that, but...
No, it's good to watch out for, I heard.
I, you know, maybe some, some token amount that they should include, I, I don't know. I don't really cover as consequences either, I don't, you know, I don't wanna chase them away, right, since I'm glad they're, I'm glad they're locating there, and, and I think that's really important, but, you know, I guess, what do they do in other cities? Does anybody know? Do they, do they hold out, do they make them? It's...
Without finding an exact situation like this, I can say that the impact, these are, they're common. You know, for a community to say, you're having this impact on the infrastructure in this area, and due to that, here's some dollars, we're gonna have you input in your overall development, that's not unusual. I'm not sure that Boom has utilized that much. But a token amount, we know that seventy-five thousand dollars was identified with Walmart, I believe that that was the amount. Talking about this being a fraction, a size, probably not as much of a traffic generator, are you thinking something like a ten, twelve thousand dollar number?
I, I was thinking five to ten, is what I was thinking.
Well, there's a couple different ways you could do that, uh, you could just simply make that a condition of approval, and then, uh, your staff could make that communication with them. You could postpone the action on the site plan until the next meeting, after we've had a chance to respond from now.
I hate to postpone, uh, the site plan. I've read the site plan and approach of NISI, along with this, and use example of what we did with Walmart, and, I mean, it's not a secret, I don't think, you know, it's, I just said we feel that you should, uh, what must be, think, what do the rest of you think? You think, you think they should do something? Do you think they should?
I do, I do, because they're gonna be, they're gonna be a part of the, I don't wanna say a part of the problem, but a part of the...
I can't think how many Casey's stores I even...
Two.
Oh, here.
No, I mean, all over.
Oh, you're...
I mean, I'm sure that somewhere along the line, something has come up like this.
Well, certainly we make a condition of approval.
And you're five thousand dollars?
I agree, I totally agree with, exactly what you're saying, if you need to, when it's five or ten grand, even. Or, you know, I mean, I don't know, they're approximately one to ten.
It is, I mean, it is, if you gotta spend money to make improvements, but... About one to ten.
Yeah, one point six million is their construction cost. I'm noticing that because they've applied for the tax abatement, the jumpstart Boom program.
Are we just gonna get back what we gave them?
But it's the same thing with Walmart, they've also applied for that.
And they got two stores here currently. It's home or Casey's.
Yeah, this is home. I think part of what this decision would mean for council is that other requests that come into area.
Yeah, that's probably more so...
Thinking about, and you, whether, um, maybe you just draw the line, and whether you say, listen, a convenience store, no, that may not, but if we could have another big box that comes in, yes, we would be asking them to again participate in money improvements.
I think that's gonna be a very busy spot, whether they do. And I guess if they're gonna be part of the problem, then you'd be part of the solution
I mean, didn't, on their study for, uh, for Walmart, wasn't like eight percent of people, even the old Walmart, went north or something like that?
Yeah, I don't remember the exact amount, but the, the majority haven't looked over the numbers. And just as a reminder, the study that was done for Walmart indicated, uh, the new Walmart and the High Trinable Restaurant, which I would equate that to the High Trinable Convenience Store too, uh, the area would perform at an acceptable level for those two. Uh, so, the study, the, uh, the assumptions were all correct, even with the Casey's there, so time being, area should function acceptable. Uh, there's just the additional development behind that, where it's starting to go down in level service.
Well, it's being put in escrow, it isn't like we're picking it from a right away, we're, uh, jumping all over the money, and it's just there for the case. And what I see what, and it's happening to come through, they have tremendous traffic flow through there, a lot of business going in and out of there, and I think Casey's would capture a lot of that.
I'll get updates, and I make a motion that we ask for seventy-five hundred dollars to be put in escrow, so I can do what I want.
Okay. Call mode.
Just a clarification.
We need to do something about the site plan.
Is that a motion of approval, motion of approval for the site plan, I don't, yes, I moved it, that we approved the site plan with seventy-five hundred dollars being put in escrow, uh, for future, uh, uh, sign.
Motion.
Traffic improvements as necessary. I guess, you can state it better if I'm not mistaken.
No, it's not, it's not.
I know, thank you for all your help.
Okay, anytime.
Yes.
They, uh, Nisham, do you have been approval of site plan with seventy-five hundred dollars to put in escrow for future traffic signal control?
For the possibility of...
I put traffic control, not signal.
Yeah, traffic control.
Just traffic control, improve.
For possible future.
There you go, yeah.
Pipa?
No.
Nisham?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Westfield? Yes. Alan?
Yes.
Nick?
Thank you.
Good luck, you guys. Just how long do you guys expect to keep that in escrow, that's, I mean... We have a timeframe on it. Was it a five year, was it five years? There was a time, it wasn't a...
We'll have to go back and look at that timeframe. I do believe there was one set on, I don't recall what it was.
Okay, sorry, I just...
That is a good question. That's part of what we're identifying, and I'm assuming that you would want an equal timeframe.
Do I mean, you admit that? That's why I made...
Since you made the motion to, okay, I don't get that. Okay, next up, approval of tax abatement applications. Uh, this was included in your packet. We apologize, I'm not sure why this converted, it came out this way, pop letters every once in a while.
What does that mean?
This is a, uh, this is, he's explaining, uh, this came from our building official, and he manages the process of these applications that come in. and he manages the process of these applications that come in for these tax abatements. If you recall, this is the urban revitalization program and more commonly referred to as Jump Start Boon. Since we started back in May fifth, two thousand and eleven, that a number of projects come forward. The county assessor, Paul Overton, has requested that these all be approved at one point in time by council, uh, in December at the end of the year, so that they know all at once what projects need to be included. As I was going through reviewing some of these, I thought it was actually pretty interesting to see what kind of development we're seeing happen in our community. Realizing that on these forms, if you quickly look at some of them, the numbers that they utilize, for example, mopless expansion are vacant. They're required to give an estimated or the actual cost of improvements. Now, many times the actual cost of improvements isn't a direct relationship to the valuation of property. But just as an idea, I went through and added all these up for commercial. Twenty-six point seven million dollars, of both of that coming from Walmart, Walmart in the pro line addition. Pro line being the twelve point five million. On the residential side, if you said that the actual construction cost, um, were put into the valuation, it's almost three quarters of a million of tax with the hybrid. So somebody may ask themselves, well, with that tax abatement project, did you make projects happen? Whether you did or not, it's just like the term is used. Somebody may have been planning to start the car anyway, giving them that little jumpstart just made it happen a lot sooner. Uh, this is a short-term project, this is only a ten-year program. So we're hopeful that during that economic downturn, again, by that program, we've seen a lot of new development occur, some people that may not have moved it forward without a statement.
The commercial investment was huge, but comedian figure was all the renovations, all the people putting money back into the properties. I thought that was...
I know we don't give any tax money on the high school, but it sure would be nice to have it in there somewhere for economic development purposes. Twenty million dollars of whatever this money invested in a high school?
So anyway, what, um, part of this, they're looking for approval. Uh, if there's any individual item that for some reason you would like to remove. Uh, otherwise, the building official in his action form identified that, and I can read this. The building official recommends approval of all submitted tax abatement applications.
Just so if someone asks me on the schedule, what does this mean for...
For a commercial, it's three years, one hundred percent, I think. Uh, for residential, it's a five year, although they're limited on the amount that can be abated. I believe it's a maximum of seven five thousand per bomb, per bomb. And there's a minimum, they have to do a certain amount of improvements to qualify as well.
You have to have your building built before you do the marketing first?
Actually, you're supposed to make application.
Because, I mean, Casey's is a...
I guess I didn't realize that you could do it anywhere in town, and I thought if you had a significance in town, you could do it.
See, I know it gets confusing. Some of our projects that we have are restricted to certain areas of town. But this one, because it's an urban revitalization instead of an urban renewal, it is for the entire community. I'm sure that's not more confusing.
Yeah, because the last dining room reached now. Now there's one, two doors up.
So, yes, uh, we'd be looking for a motion from council to approve, uh, the applications that's...
Motion approved?
Okay.
All the way.
Kitron?
Yes.
Nixton?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Westby? Yes. Mallon?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.